Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 26, 2020 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer.
Hello, it's Anne Ryan. Hello?
Thank you, everyone. This evening, we're honored to have the representatives from the Eastern Shore Crisis Response Service. And at this time, I'll turn the program over to Tina Brown, so she can introduce the people that are with her, and also give us a short presentation. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, and a special thank you to Councilwoman Blake for reaching out to us as well. We really appreciate her support. I would, so I'm Tina Marie Brown. I'm the Director for Eastern Shore Crisis Response. And I have our clinic, my clinical coordinator for the Salisbury team, Allison Hunter Jacobs is with us tonight. So she's the face of our team down in Salisbury. And then Brandy James has joined us. Brandy's the CIT Coordinator for Eastern Shore Crisis Response, and she does help us set up some meetings with law enforcement and that kind of thing in the Lower Shore. But her primary responsibilities are the Midshore and Cecil County. So I want to thank both of them for being here tonight. So if I can pull this off, let's see. There it is, hopefully. Can you see it?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. This is only the second time I've done an actual presentation, so I'm never quite sure how it's gonna go into work. So for those of you that don't know, Eastern Shore Crisis Response actually has been around for 10 years. We initially started with two teams, and actually, the very first team was in Salisbury. And our second team was in Chestertown at that point in time. And back then, 10 years ago, we served all eight counties with two teams. We currently serve eight counties with four teams. We don't serve Worcester County because they have their NCRT team through Mobile Crisis. Our call center, however, will take calls from Worcester County, and then they will forward them on to that program. But we are currently, we currently have four teams in Salisbury, or four teams on the shore, I'm sorry. MCT one Salisbury, one in Cambridge, one in Centerville, and one in Cecil County. We operate, we currently operate 24/7, 365 days a year. From 12:00 AM to 8:00 AM, we respond with law enforcement, or we can provide a telehealth response. Our program is accredited. Our model is the two-person model team. As a result of COVID, we also offer a telehealth response now, in addition to our traditional response. So we can still meet people in the community. If, for example, we do COVID screenings, just like all the other providers, if someone has had a, consumers had a positive screen, then we would offer them a telehealth model. And, but we still can do a full assessment that way. We are funded by state grants. And one of the other really important things is that our services are free to consumers, and they continue to be free to consumers, which is a really great thing in this day and age. And it is voluntary service. So if someone tells us that they do not want us to come back, then we will not. But we do try to engage people as best we can. Our goals are to reduce ED visits for behavioral health, because as we all know, that our, the mental health system puts our hospitals in crunch time when they have a lot of patients in the ER. And they could be better served in other locations. So we also want to increase access to the ED alternatives. So part of our job, or a major part of our job, is linking up people with outpatient mental health services, substance use services, whatever services they may need. At Eastern Shore Crisis Response, we actually allow the consumer to define the crisis. We don't define it. So through the years, we have found that not only do we set up people with traditional services such as outpatient mental health or substance use, but in this day and age, if we get a call for someone that asks, well, I don't know where to go for a COVID test, where can I go? Then we try and have that information available so we can answer all their questions. We try to resolve crises in the most unnatural way and be really supportive of our clients. We want to support clients in the least restrictive setting. That's why we can meet them at home. If they're not comfortable with us meeting them at home, we can meet them in the Walmart parking lot. We can meet them at Rural Farms. We can meet them at Wawa. We have met consumers in a lot of different places, and we continue to do so. We work towards a resolution with our frequent callers. We also refer to them as our noteworthy callers that call 911 a lot. If law enforcement, law enforcement can make a referral to Mobile Crisis for those callers, and we will go out and try and engage them. And we will work with them and try to get them to call either our 88 number, or if there's another line that's more appropriate for them to be calling, then we'll, we'll try to work with them. And in some cases, we've actually been successful. So, and then our call center gets the frequent calls, but it's much better for our call center to get those calls and to have law enforcement or EMS receive those calls. Another one of our goals is to reduce officer involvement in mental health and/or addiction-related dispatches. So any way that we can help law enforcement, more than willing to. We know too, in our communities, in this day and age, that dollars are stretched. And so we try to work with our law enforcement partners so that we can go out and help de-escalate mental health consumers. Or if we can get linked, get a consumer linked with mental health treatment, and they're successful, then that'll free up our law enforcement partners. So another part of our role is to also try to divert consumers from incarceration by getting them linked to the mental health services that they need. Our typical cases are consumers with chronic mental health issues. Consumers with depression, consumers who have suicidal thoughts, consumers with substance abuse issues. At times, some of our consumers can be psychotic, meaning they have hallucinations and delusions that they're responding to. We can assist law enforcement with emergency petitions. We can assist law enforcement with death notifications and/or support a family after suicide, or even support our law enforcement or emergency services departments after they've been out on a tragic call, suicide, car accidents, those kinds of things. Now, I know that Wycomico has, they do have their own system team, and we have partnered with them in the past. And we'll always continue to do that. And we have actually, on the Lower Shore, gone out on some cases for debriefings. So we can do the critical incident debriefings, and that's just when you get a group together after an incident, and they really need to process that incident, they need to talk about it. So we follow a formal process, and we're able to help in that way. We go out on situational crises. And really, what that means is that when the consumer calls and they're in crisis, they have defined the crisis, and it may not be a traditional mental health crisis, but to them it is. And so that's what's really important. Just because it's not a crisis to me, or to Allison, or to Brandy, it's not our role to define that crisis. It's really up to the consumer. We can also do some well-being checks and offer transitional support. So typically, our well-being checks will come from hospitals, because they've discharged a consumer, and they'd like us to follow up, either from the outpatient or from the emergency department, or perhaps from the inpatient unit at the hospital. We can also, we've also recently started meeting with some of our law enforcement partners in other locations to let them know that if they are going out to the same house, week after week after week, because the person believes somebody's peeping in the windows, or the person believes that someone is in their attic, or someone is in their cellar, which is, are some of the typical calls we get, that they can make a referral to us. Or the next time they're out there, if they call us, we'll be happy to go out and try and engage that consumer. So our basic tasks are to respond to that consumer in their setting. We want to respond to where they're at, unless for some reason they don't want us to, but it always makes the process go a lot smoother if we can meet the client where they're at. We want to stabilize the situation, stabilize our consumers. We'll complete a full mental health assessment. Our assessment is very comparative to what the hospital does. Then we'll make referrals and linkages to other resources and to get them hooked up. And then we'll follow up with the consumer, and we offer transitional support. And what that means is that we're going to keep that case open until we can do a warm handoff with another provider, if we've been able to set them up with other services. And we've been doing that from day one, and so we just think that's really important. Our consumers get lost in our systems, and we've found that they were more likely to be successful if we keep them open until, if say, for example, we set them up with an outpatient provider, and they can't get in for two weeks. We'll keep that call, that case open until the day of their appointment, or to make sure they went to their appointment. And if it means we need to call them three days beforehand, and call them every day, and say, Mrs. Smith, don't forget, you've got an appointment on Thursday at 10:00 AM. Do you have your transportation arranged? Do you have this? Then that's what we'll do. We're also very good about, we believe in continuity of care. So as much as we can, meaning as long as the consumer agrees to it, we try and find out who their primary care provider is, if they have a mental health provider, that provider as well, so that we can send them our assessment, because we think it's really important for all their providers to know what's going on with that person. Of the eight county, we serve, of the eight counties that we serve, Wycomico is our second busiest county that we serve. In fiscal year 20, which just ended last June 30th, we had 492 dispatches for Wycomico. 23% of all new dispatches of our eight counties, 23% of all of our new dispatches are for Wycomico. We did see a slight decrease in calls when COVID started. We found that people were less likely to call to, for assistance. We're now starting to see where we're starting to get back to normal again, and people are calling us. We had, last year, we had 36 referrals from law enforcement, and that was for the whole year. Our call center staff and our call center staff and Mobile Crisis Staff made 2,965 follow-up calls to the residents of Wycomico County last year. We actually, which I forgot to put in the slide, last year, we had 1,397 calls in from Wycomico County called into our call center. Sometimes people just call for resources, and when they do, our call center can often help them out and just give them the resources they need over the phone, which is, which is really good. And, but if they need more support than that, then they'll either arrange a dispatch, or sometimes a person will just want a clinician to give them a call. Our average response time, and this is for all eight counties, our average response time is 14 minutes, and that's based on, the average mileage for our calls is about 15 miles. And we divert, our diversion rate is about 80%, so that means 80% of the people that we go out and see that would have gone to the emergency room if we weren't around, we're able to keep them home. So, and more recently, I always like to point out how much, how we, how we can partner with law enforcement. We think it's really important, and especially in this day and age, that the law enforcement needs all the support they can get. We also need their support. There are times that we go out, that we're going out on a location, and it's not safe, and we know it's not safe, or the person has a history of violence. We will actually reach out to our law enforcement partners and ask them to meet us there for our safety, so we really appreciate the fact that they work with us. We can offer a dual response by meeting law enforcement on a behavioral health call. So if law enforcement goes, is on their way out, and they happen to know that Joe Smith is a person they've been out to see 10 times already, and it's a behavioral health issue, they can call our 888 number and have a team come out there and meet them, and we'll be happy to do that. Our Mobile Crisis Specialists are trained in de-escalation techniques. We all have mental health. Some of us have many years of mental health experience and working with that population. Law enforcement can contact us to provide family support when there's been a suicide or any, or some other kind of tragedy. Sometimes it's just nice to have somebody else at the scene that can provide some support to a family, and we're more than willing to do that. And again, we can provide support to law enforcement by providing debriefings when needed. We also, we also partner or work a lot with a group that has a support group just for law enforcement. So we have that information that we can always give law enforcement officers. We're very fortunate to have that actually down in Wycomico County. The support group is for any officer on the shore, but it just happens to be in that area, so that's, we try to promote it as much as we can. And law enforcement can also call us for, if they need, so emergency petition is that vehicle which we get people to the hospital when they need a psychiatric evaluation. So we do also offer to law enforcement that they can, if they're having trouble with the verbiage on those emergency petitions, they can call our 888 number, and our, the call center will get a clinician on the line so they can help, so they can talk with the officer about that, and how, you know, how they can word the petition. We can also, law enforcement can also just call us and say, I have this case. Is this something that you'd be able to work on? Or is there another agency that would be better suited to work with this person, and we'll be happy to help them? So here's our contact information. As I said, I'm the Director of Eastern Shore Crisis Response. There's my phone number. Feel free to call at any time. Please don't give my phone number out to our consumers. Give them our 888 number, and that's what I left off. I left off our 888 number. I'm so sorry. Our 888 number is 888-407-8018, and that's a toll-free number. If you have come across any constituents that, that need help, please give them that number, and again, that's 888-407-8018. Also, if you had any questions, you feel free to reach out to Allison Hunter Jacobs, our clinical coordinator for MCT one. And Allison's phone number is listed there, as well as her email. So, and again, Allison would prefer that you not give her phone number to consumers as well. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions?
Thank you, Tina. I will check with the council now and see if they have any, any questions. Mr. Boda, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I don't have any questions. It was an outstanding presentation. My comment, however, is I think that I used to work for this company, and we did a lot of work with the police department when they would call us. One of the things I think is the benefit to this, getting ahead of the task force that's been newly developed for law enforcement to look at changes with law enforcement, getting ahead of the game. Across the nation, the trend is having a mental health person respond with, or in conjunction, somehow a relationship with mental health providers. And I think if we could get our officers, the Salisbury Police Department, to utilize this service to see how it goes, make a true partnership, I think it would get out of the, get ahead, ahead of a recommendation that I'm sure would come out of the task force, but also would be forward-thinking in a national trend. If there's some way there could be like an official partnership with this, I think it'd be really a good idea.
Thank you, Angela. This is Gregory.
I really like that idea. I think, I think we should be responding to things with a more holistic approach than just sending out officers. You know, we ask a lot, we ask a lot of them as it is. So yeah, I really like that idea, Angela, and I would, I would be, I would like to look into that.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. From my perspective, first of all, Tina, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
My head's sort of spinning right now about, you know, we have our SWIFT team with the fire department, and how the coordination of all those things can get together. And I know on the line, we have the acting mayor and deputy city administrator. And I think what we need to do is have the work, take some time at a work session and just go over that internally. Obviously, that would come from the mayor's office in conjunction with us, and then we'll see, we'll see where it goes. But I think it's a valuable tool for sure, and I think that we need to see what the fit is with the programs that are existing already. One question for you, Tina. Most of the, most of the requests from, or the, from law enforcement, is that coming from the sheriff's office in Wycomico, or is that coming from the city police?
Actually, I think Fruitland Police Department is one of the ones that, and Allison, Allison, unmute yourself, but I know Fruitland uses us frequently, has been my experience. They use us probably more than anybody else in Wycomico, or they had.
Okay, thank you. That's good. That's good to know.
Yeah. And we do, and we do get, we do get calls from the sheriff's department on occasion, and we do, we have gotten them from the city on occasion. But what sticks in my mind is actually Fruitland will call right into the office a lot of times, so.
Well, thank you, Tina. Thank you, Allison, and thank you, Brandy. Appreciate you very much. Very interesting discussion. And we wish you the best, and we'll, we'll have our discussions. So thank you.
Thank you. Reach out anytime. If I can provide any other information, please just reach out. Thank you.
Will do. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? This is Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. A note that Ms. Jackson is absent this evening. So the vote is four to zero. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? This is Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath. On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items. We have the October 12, 2020 Legislation Session Minutes, and Resolution Number 3071, approving the appointment of Kevin Tyler Anderson to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending October 2024. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Any questions or comments from Mrs. Nichols? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comment.
Ms. Blake?
None at this time.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? Mr. Boda? Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Heath. Two items on the agenda for this evening. The Department of Procurement received requests from the Department of Waterworks and the Department of Infrastructure and Development, respectively, to solicit bids from qualified and experienced vendors for two separate procurements. The first is Invitation to Bid Number A-20-102. It's chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. The scope of work called for a vendor or vendors to provide and deliver a one-year supply of various water and wastewater treatment chemicals to the City of Salisbury Waterworks facilities. We put this out for bid on August 24th. We opened bids on September 24th. And you can see from Cory's memo that there are various awards to various, the various low bidders per chemical. One thing I do want to note that the, the two accounts that I have mentioned there, that is the remaining funding in those two accounts for chemicals for both locations. This contract would be an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, meaning we order as needed. And it does have a renewal clause in it for two one-year terms. That's upon A, always sufficient budget appropriation, and B, upon agreement with the vendor. And then lastly, there was one item that did not get any bids. It was item number nine, the Quick Lime. We'll look to the municipal code 2.32.050.0(c) .5 to determine how to handle that. When we don't receive any bids, we can then go to the open market. If there's only one particular source for that, then we would contract separately with that particular source. The second item is Invitation to Bid Number 21-104. That's the rehabilitation of Park Wells 7B and 15A. The scope of work called for the well rehabilitation, aquifer tests, replacement of submersible pumps if necessary, repairs to piping and fitting if necessary, performance testing and well disinfection. We put this out for bid on September 9th, and we opened the bids on October 7th. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was A.C. Schultes of Delaware, who's from Bridgeville, Delaware, at a cost of $136,986. For both solicitations, the city did follow required bidding practices by publicly posting all solicitations on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. The departmental memos provide recaps of the pricing submitted by solicitation and by vendor. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award these contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders as indicated.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
How long was, yeah, I hit the wrong button. Was the bid open for this, the last contract?
Which, for the chemicals?
Hold on a second. I lost my place. No, the, the second contract.
How long was the bid o?
Because it opened on October 2nd, but your memo says October 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry. September night, we, we put it out for bid September 7th. We opened it October 7th. Can I even read? We put it out for bid Octo, September 9th and opened it October 7th. Sorry.
Been a long day.
It has for everybody. It really has.
It's right there.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No comments.
This is Gregory.
No comments.
I have one question. I don't know if it's for Cory or you, Jen. Are any of the, any of these chemicals sole sourced?
I would have to go back to the bid tab and look to see who no bid which items, to see if there was, you know, one particular chemical that only came from one particular bidder, and then I would have to understand why some bidders didn't bid on that. Some, some vendors are very specific to the type of chemical that they're bidding. And you saw in Cory's memo, the number of line items, the number of chemicals that we have. So not every single vendor bids every single item. Some may be very specific to just one or two items.
Yeah, my only concern is that if you get a single source or one person that has a monopoly on a product, you're, you're, put yourself at risk in some cases. So that, that's my only concern. But I think it might be a good exercise to go back and look and see if, do the analysis, you said, a quick analysis. But, okay, that's, that's it. I'll call the motion now. I'll call the motion now. Uh, all those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
This Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The award of bids is passed by four, a vote of four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Uh, this evening, we have a public hearing on ordinance number 2619 for the second reading. Uh, amending section 17.1212.030 to warehouses or storage facilities as a permitted use in shopping centers. I'll now call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2619 for the second reading.
Second, Boda, I think said so moved.
I second.
All right, let's, let's give it to Mr. Boda. And, uh, a second by Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in Section 4.103 of Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending section 17.212.030 to add warehouses or storage facilities as permitted, uh, use in shopping centers. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendment that will keep Title 17 current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Land Use Article 4 dash 101. And in accordance with the specific provisions of chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17. And whereas the mayor and council requested that Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas Sperry Van Ness Miller Commercial Real Estate submitted an application to amend the text of chapter 17.212, shopping centers to add warehouses or storage facilities as a permitted use in section 17.212.030. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission according with the provisions of 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on June 18th, 2020. And whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment in section 17.212.030, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Amend section 17.212.030 permitted uses by adding item L as follows. L will read warehouses or storage facilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Tillman. Questions or, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, and anyone who wishes to speak will have to be sworn in by the city clerk. Uh, anyone who wishes to speak, please identify yourself. Andy, when, if someone identifies themselves, please, uh, give me their name.
Uh, council president, I have nobody recommending to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then I'll close the public hearing. And I'll call for a vote on ordinance number 2619 for the second reading. All in favor, please say aye. Mr. Boda? You're having trouble with your mute button there, there. There you go.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote on ordinance number 2619 is approved by a vote of four to zero. The text amendment will become effective on November the 5th, 2020.
Great.
I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2621 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second?
This Blake? Mr. Boda?
Okay.
Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, except, uh, accepting donated funds from members of the community for various community betterment projects and amending the FY 2021 budget to appropriate these donated funds for those projects. Whereas the City of Salisbury has established a kindness commission in order to better the lives of our fellow citizens through acts of kindness and compassion. And whereas Ben's Red Swings is a playground that was created to honor the memory of Benjamin Leighton and was constructed by his family, friends, and other members of the Salisbury community. And whereas the city has accepted donations from members of the community who are interested in contributing to the good works of the Kindness Commission and the maintenance and upkeep of the Ben's Red Swings Playground. And whereas Dr. Val Nathson has provided a donation in the amount of $300 for the Kindness Commission. And whereas the First Shore Federal Savings and Loan Association has provided a donation in the amount of $100 for the Kindness Commission. And whereas the William and Brenda Beecham have provided a donation in the amount of $50 for Ben's Red Swings Playground. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of these donations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city accept the aforementioned donated funds to be spent on the program and or projects for which the donation was made. And be it further ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2021 budget be as hereby amended as follows. Increase the donations other kindness commission revenue account by $400. Two, increase the kindness commission's operating expense account by $400. Three, increase the donations other playground maintenance revenue account by $50. And four, increase the playground maintenance expense account by $50.
Thank you, Mrs. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda? No. Uh, Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2621 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
This Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2621 is passed by a vote of four to zero. Before I go any further, I would like to acknowledge I did forget something after the consent agenda. I want to thank Kevin Tyler Anderson for volunteering to serve on the Human Rights Advisory Committee. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2622 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda?
Second.
This is Gregory? I believe we have an amendment for this.
We, we do. We do. I'd like to, um, make a motion for an amendment to ordinance 2622 for line 43. It reads right now, $109,246.82. It needs to read $109,028.69.
We have an amendment on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
This is Gregory? This Blake made the motion. This Gregory seconded. All those in favor of the motion, the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
This Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will now vote on the amended ordinance. All those in favor of the, yes?
Um, it should be presented.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Sorry, Ms. Nichols. Jump the gun.
It actually should have been presented before the amendment, but that's okay. It's just not ideal, but anyway.
Okay. We need to read them. We need to read the ordinance. Correct. Mr. Tillman, please read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with federal emergency management agencies for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $109,028.69. And to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2020 grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-19 expenses. Whereas on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared that yawn going coronavirus 2019 COVID-19 pandem- pandemic was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to section 501B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. And whereas in accordance with section 502 of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to COVID-19 emergency at the direction or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's FEMA's Public Assistance Program. And whereas the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas FEMA funding assistance will be provided to the city at a 75% federal cost share rate. And whereas the city has been awarded reimbursement from FEMA in the amount of $109,028.69 for COVID-19 related expenditures as reflected in the attached exhibits. And whereas section 7 dash 29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a contract agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to accept grant funds in the amount of $109,028.69. And be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2020 grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHS FEMA revenue account by $109,028.69. Two, increase the SFD medical expense account by $109,028.69.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments?
This Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion then. All those in favor of the amended ordinance number 2622 as read, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
This Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion num- uh, ordinance number 2622 for the second reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'm blaming that on, uh, Mr. Boda's button for not being able to unmute himself.
I'm struggling with the split screen tonight.
I, I understand.
I want to thank Jimmy Gladwell for all the encouragement he's been giving me.
Okay. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2623 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $36,342.90. And to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2020 grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-19 expenses. Whereas the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act for COVID-19 related expenditures. And whereas the city expects to receive reimbursement from the Wycomico County Health Department in the amount of $36,342.90 for COVID-19 related expenditures as reflected in the attached exhibit. And whereas section 7 dash 29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept grant funds in the amount of $36,342.90. Be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2020 grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase Wycomico County Health Department revenue account by $36,342.90. And increase the Salisbury Fire Department medical expense account by $36,342.90.
Thank you, Mrs. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Questions or comments?
This Blake?
No questions or comments.
This is Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2623, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
This Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2623 is passed by a vote of, vote of four zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2624 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
This Blake? This is Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter 8.11, the Fire Prevention Code, sections point 020, point 040, and 060 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. By adding new permits that are required to be obtained from the fire marshal, removing the reference to the International Building Code, removing housing and community development in section 8.11.040, and establishing a timeframe for submitting inspections in 8.11.060 with third-party inspection requirements. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, amendment. And whereas the city of Salisbury adopts the State Fire Prevention Code with local amendments. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to establish and list the specific permits required from the fire marshal's office. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to collect all third-party inspection reports through a vendor system data collection company within 15 days of the inspection date. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury in chapter 8.11, the Fire Prevention Code, sections point 020, 040, and 060 of the Salisbury Municipal Code are hereby amended as follows. Under 8.11, the Fire Prevention Code, it will read, uh, the, uh, under 8.11.020 amendments to the State Fire Prevention Code, it will read A, the National Fire Protection Association Life Safety Code 101 as referenced, amended, and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission is adopted by the city with the following local amendments. Paragraph one, fire prevention fees shall be established by resolution of the city council. Under B, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Code 1 as referenced, amended, and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission is adopted by the city with the following local amendments. One, the Board of Appeals shall be the building board of adjustments and appeals. Paragraph two, any person who fails to comply with a provision to the code or, or who fails to carry out an order made pursuant to this code or violates any condition attached to a permit, approval, or certificate may be subject to a municipal infraction not to exceed $500 each day the violation continues. Three, failure to comply with the time limits of the abatement notice or other corrective notice issued by the authority having jurisdiction may result in municipal infractions not to exceed $500 for each day the violation continues. And, uh, and the authority having jurisdiction shall have authority to, um, evacuate, vacate, or order such building or structure to be closed to the public. Paragraph four include Annex E firefighter safety building marking system with the local amendments. And then the local amendments, uh, to ER, and then they are itemized at under small I. Subsection A, small I, uh, under 1.3.6.1, the following letters shall be used to indicate special hazards assigned to the center of the Maltese cross. Uh, under F will be established for floor hazard, the capital letter R for roof hazard, W for wall hazard, H for holes in structure, S for stairs compromised, and M maze-like confusing layout. Under, uh, small double I- Under, uh, small double I, uh, add E point, uh, one point three point six point two. Where the authority having jurisdiction determines the conditions to be severe enough to limit all operational activity to defensive mode only, a red X shall be placed through the center section of the Maltese cross. Paragraph five, replace subsection ten point ten point one permits with ten point ten point one open burning prohibited and open burning other than cooking and recreational fires compliant with the provisions of this code is prohibited. And then under six permits from the Fire Marshal were required for the following, and we are adding items K, L, and M. K reads installation, modification or removal from service of any, uh, private fire hydrants. L reads fireworks displays and M reads to store, transport, or on-site, uh, dispense, use, or handle hazardous materials. Um, C is being struck under that section and then under eight point one one point oh four oh inspections. A will read to the fullest extent permitted by law, the Fire Department is authorized to enter and examine at all reasonable times any building, structure, marine vessel, vehicle, or premises for the purpose of making fire safety inspections. There is one exception, and that is from the case of one and two family dwelling units. Under B, personnel responsible for administering and enforcing this code shall be trained to a minimum level of fire inspector one in accordance with the National Fire Protection Code. And C, personnel will periodically inspect all buildings and structures as herein set forth in this code on a schedule derived from life, safety, and fire risk assessment. Section eight point one one point oh six oh entitled third party inspections will read a report of all third party inspections required by this code shall be submitted to the Fire Marshal's office for review within fifteen days of the inspection date. A third party or vendor system data collection agency or company may be utilized for the collection of completed third party inspection reports and associated collection filing fees. And then, uh, the rest is just an explanation of the markings used in the document I just read. I'm, I'm finished, yes.
But I have no comments or questions.
This Blake?
No comments or questions.
This is Gregory?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. One question, Deputy Chief Gladwell, how many inspections do we do, uh, annually roughly?
Well, there's over five thousand, um, commercial structures that we are responsible for. Um, each shift is assigned a number of inspections each month. And I would say that, uh, we also have a building inspector that goes out each day, Monday through Friday. So without having the numbers right in front of me, uh, Mr. Heath, I would probably say probably twenty five hundred or better.
Okay. Could, if you get that number, could you just send it to me?
I certainly will, sir. I'll have it for you tomorrow.
Thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Our hearing, there's no other questions. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two four, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two four is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two six two five for the second reading.
So moved.
This Blake?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Uh, this is a companion ordinance to the one that was just read. It's ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for the F Y two zero two one. Whereas ordinance number twenty five ninety five, uh, sets fees for F Y two zero two one, and whereas the ordinance, um, I guess it was, the last one was twenty six twenty four. Uh, amended chapter eight point one one, the Fire Prevention Code, section point oh two oh to include permit requirements for the plan review and associated inspections of any fireworks displays. And whereas the Fire Department desires to establish fees for the plan review and associated inspections of any fireworks displays. And whereas the Fire Department recommends that the attached fee schedule be added to the ordinance twenty five ninety five so the fees may be collected in F Y two zero two one. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached exhibit one amended F Y two zero two one fee schedule are adopted by the City of Salisbury and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the prior corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
Hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two five, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two five is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two six two six for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and twenty eight cents. And to approve a budget amendment to the F Y two zero two one grant fund to appropriate these funds for the purchase of two commercial grade washer extractors and dryers. Whereas the Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the Federal Coronavirus Relief Funds. And whereas the purpose of the C R F is to prevent, uh, excuse me, is to help support emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation related to covid nineteen. And whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant request to the Wycomico County Health Department for funding to assist in the purchase of a commercial grade washer extractor and dryer for two of our fire stations. And whereas the Wycomico County Health Department has awarded the city funds in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and twenty eight cents. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept grant funds in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and twenty eight cents. And be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year two zero two one grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase the Wycomico County Health Department revenue account by twenty four thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and twenty eight cents. And increase the Salisbury Fire Department equipment expense account by twenty four thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and twenty eight cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
This Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two six, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two six for the first reading is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two six two seven for the first reading.
So moved.
This is Gregory?
Second.
Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department and approving a budget amendment of the F Y two zero two one general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Wycomico County Health Department in the amount of seventy five hundred dollars. Whereas the funds have been provided by the Wycomico County Health Department in conjunction with Midshore Behavioral Health, Inc., for a safe station program. And whereas Safe Station is an innovative program that helps remove barriers to treatment for members of our community who are eager to recover from substance use and disorder. And whereas the goal of the Safe Station is to help people with linkage to treatment and recovery services by allowing them to practice self-determination. And whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department will provide non-emergent medical checks to all individuals that enter the Safe Station. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department, defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas the accepted funds must be used to purchase additional emergency medical supplies and equipment. And whereas both the Fire Chief and the mayor have recommended that the city accept the monetary donation, allocate the funds to the Fire Department in the F Y two zero two one operating budget. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits contracts requiring an expenditure in excess of the amount appropriated for that general classification or expenditure and forbids any office department or agency from expending funds not appropriated. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept funds in the amount of seventy five hundred dollars. And be it further ordained, what?
Pardon?
Just one more. And be it further ordained that the, uh, these fiscal year two zero two one general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase the F two zero two one general fund Wycomico County Health Department reimbursement account by seventy five hundred and increase the Fire Department expenditure medical account by seventy five hundred. All done.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
Uh, nothing other than this is great, this is great. I love this, um, so.
Jimmy, what station is going to be the safe station? Two?
Uh, it does, it, it's not at a fire department station, uh, Mr. Heath. It's at, um, a location over on South Salisbury Boulevard.
Oh, okay.
As, as, as the, is that, um, entity processes incoming individuals. They'll give us a call. We'll, we'll respond, uh, non-emergency, go over there, give them a basic, uh, medical evaluation and then go from there.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two seven, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two seven for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two six two eight for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda?
Second.
This is Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team known as SWIFT. Whereas Wycomico County Health Department in conjunction with the City of Salisbury applied for funds through the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission, C H R C Grant Program. And whereas the C H R C awarded the Wycomico County Health Department funds in F Y two zero eighteen in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. And whereas the Wycomico County Health Department has previously sub-granted eighty one thousand nine hundred twenty dollars to the City of Salisbury. Those funds being appropriated via ordinance twenty five oh three and ordinance twenty five fifty nine. And whereas the remaining eight thousand eighty dollars of the F Y two zero eighteen funding that was received by the Wycomico County Health Department from the, uh, C H R C and the Wycomico C H R C, the Wycomico County Health Department is now sub-granning four thousand six hundred dollars to the City of Salisbury. And whereas these funds are to be added to existing SWIFT grant program account two one zero zero nine. And whereas the sub-granted funds shall be used to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a sub-grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept and expend grant funds in the amount of four thousand six hundred dollars. And be it further ordained that the city's F Y two one grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in the Wycomico County Health Department SWIFT grant revenue account by forty six hundred. Increase in the SWIFT equipment expense account by forty six hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Uh, nothing other than, you know, the, the SWIFT team, of course, is, is a great program and, uh, appreciate anything we can get for it, so.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Uh, no, no, um, questions or, or, uh, concerns. I just love the SWIFT program. I'm just glad that we get a lot of, of grant money for it.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Um, as I've said before, um, the SWIFT program is one of the most successful programs that I've been involved with uh, since I've been on the council. And, uh, Jimmy, your guys do a great job along with the hospital and, and, uh, it's, it's, it's an outstanding program and I just hope we can keep it going. It's too bad we can't expand it.
Well, it's funny you say that because the, never say never, never say can't.
Good. I like it. All right, uh, I'll call the motion now. All those in favor of ordinance number two six two eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six two eight for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. That concludes the radio agenda. Um, Mr. Kitrow, do we have any, uh, public comments, requests for public comments?
There are no requests for public comments at this time. If anybody wanted to make public comment, um, can enter it into the chat or let me know right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kitrow. Council members, council comments for the good of the order, Mr. Boda?
Uh, just remind everybody, make sure you get out and vote. Early voting is open up at the Civic Center. Uh, and, uh, unless you got a mail-in ballot, I, I voted a few weeks ago. Uh, so just encourage everybody to vote and make sure we continue to support our local businesses and restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Obviously get out there and vote, and if you're healthy enough, please, please donate blood.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Uh, just want to reiterate, get out and vote, and, um, there's been amazing turnout. Uh, the number I just heard was twenty three hundred people today alone. So that's fantastic news. I'm, I'm, I was so happy to see so many people out there, uh, dedicated to, to exercising their right to vote. So keep it up, guys.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, I too want to encourage any, anybody that is healthy enough, please give blood and donate. Um, and wear your masks, folks. It works. And, uh, Maryland is one of the, uh, states that is living proof of that. Uh, so wear your masks and support local business. Uh, with that, um, this meeting is adjourned and I want to enter, well, it's not adjourned yet, I'm sorry. We'd like, I'd like to entertain a motion to convene a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? This is Gregory. We were going to be, we'll be going to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Or any other personnel matter affecting one or more specific individuals in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland, three dash three oh five B one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This council will now go into closed session. Thank you everyone for participation tonight. City council has just come out of a closed session, uh, to discuss an appointee evaluation. And, uh, without having any further business, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Have a great night.
Good evening.